Go ahead Chuck.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of the Weathersfield Board of Education. It's Tuesday, November 24th, 2020. We are holding this meeting virtually in accordance with the Governor's Executive Order. Ellen, can we have roll call, please?
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Cassio? Mrs. Evans?
Here.
Mrs. Granato?
Present.
Mr. Lesser?
Here.
Mr. Michaels?
Here.
Mrs. Paradise?
Present.
Mr. Riley? Vice Chairperson, Mr. Healy?
Here.
Chairperson, Mr. Carey?
Present, and please let the record know, Mr. Riley is here. Did he say present? I didn't hear him.
He was present.
There he goes.
Thank you.
Yes.
So, Mr. Riley is here. And Weathersfield High School Student Representative, Mr. Diago, when?
Here.
All present.
Thank you so much. Mr. Maltese, can you lead us in the pledge, please? We can hear you.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America
And to the republic
Republic which stands
One nation under God
God
indivisible with liberty
with liberty justice
justice for all
Great job, Mike.
Beautifully choreographed.
All right, moving on to approval of minutes. Ms. Paradise, I believe you have a motion for us?
Motion to approve the minutes of November 10th, 2020, regular Board of Education meeting.
So move.
A second. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none with a motion in a second at table, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to public comment. Mr. Emmett, is there anyone on the phone?
No one on the phone at this point in time, Mr. Carey.
All right, I have two emails to read in that were sent in today. I read the first one by Christina Patterson. "To whom it may concern, I hope that everyone is being healthy and safe during these difficult times. I personally know that it's not easy as a public servant in a local community, and more importantly, as a mother of Weathersfield Elementary School children. I am here to voice my concerns for my children and all the children of Weathersfield. I completely understand that times are tough across the board for each and every one of us. I will dive right into this. I feel like our neighboring towns are handling schooling for children a lot better than our administration in Weathersfield. Glastonbury currently has elementary schools running at full capacity, and they're doing a seamless job. Glastonbury has been doing this since the school year started. What happened in Weathersfield? It seems that Mr. Emmett haven't given this idea a chance. Second, Rocky Hill is doing the same thing, and again, why are we not giving it a fair chance? When I reached out to the Superintendent's Office in regards to concerns, they couldn't provide answers. Well, what answers have been given? Another email to say, we have another case in town. Let's speak facts, and let's speak about the impact that this is having educationally, emotionally, and long-term for our children. Our children are going to fall behind their fellow counterparts in surrounding communities, which is not acceptable. Parents aren't trained, as wonderful teachers are, to provide these children with the educational models that they need. What is the real answer? Are we making everyone after Thanksgiving homeschool to learn that our kids will be met with another disadvantage of remaining in hybrid through the winter? Just prior to the intended return date? In all about, in all about public safety across the board, and understand, we all are concerned with our kids and staff staying safe. I feel like our kids are at a complete disadvantage compared to neighboring districts. Parents who need to go to work each and every day outside of the home are struggling to properly provide the same educational experience that they would receive at school. Parents who are working remotely are struggling. I want what is best for our kids, and I think it should be an option for our parents. If you want to keep your kids home, we respect it. If your, if your parents want their kids at school, it should be happening. Parents need to stop allowing large groups of kids to gather. I know our kids miss friends, but we know we, but right now, we need to teach our kids what is safest, and by doing what is safe, our schools can go full-time. I thank you for your time and your concerns and open ears. Please, as a community, let's do what's right for our children. Let's give, get back. Let's get them back in the classroom where they belong. Christina Foss Rugan. And I have one other email to read. "To whom it may concern, I'm a parent of, of children enrolled in Weathersville Public School District. The structure that has been put in place in our community is a disgrace. Our children are falling way behind their peers in surrounding towns due to lack of in-person learning in four, in four days' school weeks. I can list town after town where students have been in class five days per week since September. Studies show COVID is not being spread in classrooms. I wonder what the problem is in Weathersfield? And why we are so behind in being able to figure this out? I wonder why we think it's acceptable for our students? We are doing a huge disservice to our children, and we need to follow other towns' leads to get our students back in the classroom. Thank you. Amy Blanco." No other comments, Emmett?
Did they give any addresses?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Blanco, B-L-A-N-C-O?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone get on the phone while we were doing that, Mr. Emmett?
No, Mr. Carey.
Perfect. All right, moving on to communications, Mr. Emmett.
Yes, good evening, everyone. Thank you. And as you well know, this month has been extraordinarily challenging. You can see that by our dashboard, which is posted on our website and updated on a daily basis. We currently, as of this evening, sit at a total of 58 positive cases in the town of Weathersfield in the public school system. Forty-four of those cases are positive cases among students, and an additional 14 cases among staff. Over the course of the past month, we have had to have Emerson Williams go full remote for two weeks. We are wrapping up a remote learning experience at Silas Dean Middle School after having a total of 14 staff members and 99 students have to go out on quarantine. We have also struggled at High Crest Elementary School to maintain that building being open, as well as Hammer Elementary School. At the last Board of Education meeting, I had reported that Hammer School had zero cases. And then, within that period of two weeks, we now have five positive student cases, two positive staff cases, and at one point in time, had 16 staff members at Hammer on quarantine. It is tough to run a building when you have that many staff members out. What we were able to do because of the fact that Silas Dean was on full remote, we were able to take building subs from Silas Dean, as well as our other elementary schools, to be able to float them over to Hammer to allow Hammer to continue to run. In addition to that, Mr. Cohen did yeoman's work of being able to identify specific cohorts that had smaller numbers, and was then able to provide them with a full remote learning opportunity, and still maintained the building being open. This has been a monumental task. As you know, I reported last Friday that the Weathersfield Public Schools will open next week in a full remote model. It is only for a week. It is an opportunity for all of those who will be traveling to adhere to the travel advisory and make sure to avoid a 14-day quarantine, that you have ample time to get tested. Let me talk a little bit about the process of getting tested these days. Last evening, I got a phone call regarding a positive case that we had at High Crest Elementary School. This positive case was an independent contractor that had close contact with three of our staff members here in town. Three of them had to quarantine. One made an appointment or attempted to make an appointment to get a test. The earliest appointment date was this coming Sunday. Then went to Renshaw Field this morning to be tested, and the wait was hours long. We're giving this opportunity for, for full remote to allow staff members and families to be able to, especially those that are traveling, to get the test in order to be able to avoid quarantine. We see what the reality is. I could tell you right now that we have not seen spread within school, but when we were talking about that close contact, we're talking about quarantine. At the beginning of the week, we were north of 300 staff members and students being quarantined. We only have so many subs to go around. And, you know, when we talk about other districts, I do meet with my colleagues on a weekly basis, and I know that the area towns are also struggling with being able to maintain full in-person learning. This has been a challenge. My hope is, as the public comments said about gatherings, social gatherings, and sports, we found that those were the two chief areas where we had spread. We need to make sure we're doing a good job of social distancing and using all of our mitigation strategies to get through this wave. One of the things we look at is we look at the metric, and the metric over the past four weeks, 10.5, or 10.6, excuse me, 15.6, 22.5, and now up to 37.5 in terms of the positivity rate. That shows widespread community spread. And at this point in time, we look at 25 as being a marker for looking for more remote learning. I'm trying to avoid more remote learning, but it's going to take a concerted effort. It's going to take a concerted effort on the part of staff. We should not be quarantining or having to quarantine staff who have come into close contact with each other. So the reminder went out last week to make sure that in staff lounges, you are maintaining social distance. We are creatures of habit. We're social creatures. We like to socialize. But right now, we need to maintain that appropriate social distance, our staff and our students as well. Again, moving forward, it is not my intention to extend the, the closure or the extension of remote learning any longer than we have to. I want these kids in. As you are keenly aware, we were embarking upon our full reopening the first week of November. Our data said otherwise, and I think with the number of positive cases we have seen explode in this district over the past couple of weeks, that is unfortunately the reality. We want to keep our kids safe. We want to keep our kids in, and we're going to continue to work carefully with the Central Connecticut Health District to make sure that happens. So that's the piece on full remote learning. And again, we're going to look at the data. If we continue to see a high number of cases, and we have to reconsider and close for longer, certainly, we're going to do so. But it is our intention to get the kids back in as soon as we can. One of the things that we talked about at a recent DPH meeting was, what is the metric around when we go to full in? And the DPH reports, there is no metric. There is no magic number for when we get kids in. I will tell you this. We will focus very heavily on getting our elementary students in first and foremost. As you know, our reopening plan called for pre-K, K, and 1. That will be the first group of grade levels that come back when the CCHD and the DPH deem it safe to do so. We definitely want our kids in, but we're going to do this from a perspective of health and safety first. We've said that since this pandemic started and really took off back in early March. Other items for communication this evening, ladies and gentlemen, I just want to let everybody know that we have an upcoming Social Justice Coalition meeting that is scheduled for Monday, November 30th at 5:30 PM. The title of this session is "Our Town, Our Commitment: Setting Priorities." And this is going to be an opportunity for us to hear from the community about what priorities community members see that the steering committee can help facilitate. So we're looking forward to an interactive conversation. All of our upcoming Social Justice Coalition meetings, unfortunately, still are virtual. I'm looking for the time period where we can actually get together in person. I long for those days, along with an in-person board meeting. Hopefully, we'll get there soon. If you are interested in attending the Social Justice Coalition, please visit our website. There is registration information. Our last count, when we met with Steering Committee last Wednesday, we had 89 community members signed up. So we're certainly looking forward to a lively conversation coming up next Monday. I, I want to also provide you with an important piece of news. This is kind of bittersweet for, for me, and certainly for the district as well. I've been informed that our longtime Weathersfield High School Principal, Mr. Thomas Moore, has announced that he will be retiring. Mr. Moore has served as principal at Weathersfield High School since 2001, a long and illustrious 20-year career here in Weathersfield. We will be starting our process for the selection of the next instructional leader at Weathersfield High School very early in January, with the anticipation of having this position filled as of July 1st, 2021. So heartfelt congratulations to Mr. Tom Moore, and thank you for your 20 years of service. And finally, last but not least, I'd like to wish everyone this evening a happy, safe, and healthy Thanksgiving. That's communications. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Emmett. Moving on to action items. Mr. Healy, I believe you have a motion?
Okay, hold on a second. We go to... Yes, Mr. Chairman, I I recommend a motion that we approve the new curriculum Integrated Science, which is a reference to on your agenda, and I'll explain after the motion is made.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Granato.
Yeah, thank you. Real briefly, this, you've got the breakdown of the course in front of you, the units, the outline of this course for freshmen. I know Sally will jump in if I make a mistake, but I think it's a very good, rigorous course for kids, for science at a critical age. And obviously, the more we do with science and offer that to our kids and engage them at this level, I think is critical. And I just want to commend Sally and others who put it together. Tom Brown and Brandon Chatfield as well for their work on this. I think it's a great-looking course, and I'm excited about it, and ask that the board approve it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Healy. Mr. Stoli, you have anything to add? I thought he did a good job, but...
No, he did an excellent job, so thank you for that.
Flattery will get you everywhere. Take the rest of the night off.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. To, to Sally or to Chris, is this replacing a current science class, or is this just an additional class added to the curriculum?
That's a great question. It is a current class. Our ninth graders have been taking this class for probably over eight years. This reflects or changed in the curriculum. So the original curriculum was written based upon the Connecticut Core Standards for Science. Several years ago, Connecticut adopted the NGSS standards, National Next Generation Science Standards. So this curriculum reflects some changes in the curriculum, reflects some new standards. It is also a foundational course that prepares our juniors for taking the NGSS assessments in science also. So this curriculum was aligned to that assessment.
Got it. Thank you, Sally.
Thank you, Sally, for making that clear. I should have done so, but thank you.
Ms. Granato?
We had a robust conversation at the Student and Programming Services meeting that night, too, on it. And I went back over it, and it is, it is a, an excellent curriculum that they have created. One quote I wanted to say to everyone is, it says, "Students are encouraged to make connections between the phenomena studied and things they have experienced and observed in their own daily lives." And that's what we've been trying to do. So that was excellent.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none with a motion in a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstention? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone.
Thanks.
Moving on to reports and discussion items. Mr. Emmett, the first read of the proposed calendars, 2021, 22, and 22, 23.
Thank you, Mr. Carey. This document, or these documents, come before you for a first read this evening, prior to hopeful approval at the first board meeting in the month of December. This process was carried out by a committee of teachers, administrators, and administrative assistants. These are two calendars for the upcoming two school years. Traditionally, the board has done a two-year calendar in advance to allow parents the opportunity for planning purposes around vacations. I will say that one item on the calendar that occurred with collaboration with the town is the day after New Year's Day being a day off with the custodial contract. The custodial contract calls for that day off as a recognition of New Year's Day. So given the fact that it's a contractual obligation, we built that into our calendar because we know full well our buildings cannot operate without having our custodians in place. So at this point in time, it's available for feedback. It is up on our website, so any feedback that you may have, please provide that, and we'll look to bring this before you again in December.
Excellent. Mr. Ms. Granato?
Mike, I just had one question as the committee got together. Did anyone think of not calling it Columbus Day, just because of the news around that?
Yeah, we, we did not have any specific discussion around that. I know there are some area districts that have talked about it becoming Indigenous Peoples' Day. I know yeah, so that's certainly something that, you know, down the road, perhaps the board can take up and take a look at. The other thing I want to bring your attention to also is that one of the changes that we talked about was having a regular school day on Veterans Day. And that is one thing that we're looking to change that will involve a conversation with the secretaries and paras union. But as you may know, we will be negotiating with them in the spring. The idea, and this really was driven by the teachers with the support of administration, was to utilize that day on Veterans Day to be a rich and robust discussion and learning opportunity for our kids around the idea of Veterans Day and what it means and what it entails.
Thank you. Michael. Question on the tentative end-of-school days. I know for so many years in the past, they've always been tentative because of snow days. Now, with the onset of remote learning, will we look to do away with snow days if the school buildings aren't open and have remote learning? And then, thus make those tentative end-of-school days, you know, just the permanent end-of-school day, not needing necessarily to factor in snow days?
That is a great question, Mr. Lesser. One of the things that you will see coming up on the agenda for the December board meeting is a presentation of our Snow Day Remote Learning Day guidelines. So we have a committee of individuals that sat down and took a look at the state guidelines, which came out over the past month. And we are looking at presenting to you a combination. First two days would be snow days, followed by any remaining days being remote learning. So we'll have a lot more detail coming up for the December meeting.
Thank you, Michael.
You're welcome. Mr. Emmett, if I remember right, I believe the State Board only approved that for this year.
That is correct, sir. Yes.
So the remote learning wouldn't take place next year, Kenny, unless it gets approved?
Got it.
It was only for this year they approved it. Any other questions? Excellent. Moving on to update on the high school sports, Mr. Emmett.
Yes, I'm pleased to have with us this evening Mr. Mike Maltese, our Athletic Director/Assistant Principal over at Weathersfield High School. And, you know, obviously, we typically would have our athletes be recognized during staff-student recognition at a live board meeting. Nothing was normal over the course of this fall. So Mr. Maltese has a brief presentation, a wrap-up fall sports, and a brief glimpse into winter sports, which, as you know, currently on hold until mid-January. So, Mr. Maltese?
Good. Thank you, Superintendent. Chairperson Carey, Board of Education, I have some information to share with you regarding the past fall season. Certainly, it was a season full of constant changes, as I'm sure Mr. Emmett kept you abreast of. It was also abnormal, as you know. It was fluid, if we're allowed to use that word, still in education. It was exhausting, but it really was exciting. And for the students that were able to get onto the fields, onto the court, and into the pool, we were able to put out, I think, a meaningful experience for them, especially our seniors who, who lost quite a bit their, their junior year as they head into a fall, brand-new school year, able to put on that uniform one last time. So I did prepare a brief slideshow. I'll, I'll talk over as I kind of go through the fall, some of the timeline that occurred during the summer, which preceded the fall season, and what I expect or don't expect for, for the winter season. So I'm going to attempt to share my screen at this point in time.
You're brave.
And I hope everyone can hear me still?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Great. And I, I believe you all received this information from Mrs. Murphy in, in the package, so I'm certainly not going to read it all to you. But down in the athletic office, it's really a three-person department with our athletic trainer and our administrative secretary. We are active and out there on social media, and we have a very robust website as well, which the community is encouraged to, to, to visit. So fall sports in 2020 really began back in, in August, where the CIC on August 10th was ready to put out all of their protocols and, and, and all of the new things in place as we look to combat what was really unknown at the time in, in regards to the COVID-19 virus. But as you can see, as quickly as August 12th, they then began to change their mind. And a plan they had put forth for all of our athletes to start on August 19th was, was then taken away, almost less than a week, week away. And our football kids especially took the brunt of all this change with, with the CIC. And back and forth on the 10th, the 12th, and the 14th, football was on, football was off, football was back on, and football was, was off again. It was decided in the middle of August to begin work on the 29th, and that would include football again. But all of our coaches were required to keep kids in small cohorts of 10 for for the unforeseeable future, probably about a three-week period of time. There would be no contact whatsoever in any of our sports, with, with football, cheer dance, even along with soccer, field hockey, and, and our other fall sports. Prior to that 29th coming, football was again taken off the table, and we wasn't sure at that point in time what football would, would look like. And just want to make a note there that at the same time, and what was confusing to many of our families and, and all of our kids, and, and me, and I think the entire administration, was youth football was allowed to take place. So tackle football began on August 1st over, over at Webb Elementary School with, with students ages six to 14. So you could have on one street a 14-year-old eighth grader playing complete tackle football, and you could have a 14-year-old freshman who wasn't allowed to, to put a pad or a helmet on. And as we tried to just gather as much information we could from the CIC and local health departments, we were unable to get a lot of, a, a lot of answers. Ultimately, we were able to start practices on September 21st, five weeks later than the initial start date. With that, we had some, some pretty stiff regulations we had to, we, we had to follow. And I'll get into those in ju, in just a minute. But we began games on, on October 1st. Prior to that, it was announced that the, on the 29th of September, actually, it was announced that the football season would not go on in the fall, and that there was hopes to have an alternative season at some point in the winter. And the timeframe they have for there is somewhere between February and April. But we've yet to receive any guidance or what that might even look like if, if, if it should happen. On, on November 5th, so ultimately, three months after all this talk began in, in August, Governor Lamont issued an executive order setting parameters on youth sports. So it wasn't until two weeks ago that high school sports and youth sports began to see any type of parallel decision-making over at the state. We concluded our season on, on November 12th. And five days later, it was announced that our winter sports wouldn't start till, at a minimum, January 19th. So that was kind of a timeline heading into the fall season. And again, I talked about all the benefits of high school, inter-scholastic athletics, really the benefit of any extracurricular activity at any K to 12 school that, that we have here in Weathersfield or across the state or across our country. So what was different this year is we talked about mitigating strategies, a word or a phrase a year ago. I don't think anybody had ever really heard, heard or used. But what we did this year at Weathersfield High School daily was we gave out an electronic COVID screen. So any athlete had to complete a 10-question there, asking them about their different symptoms. Any student with a symptom was contacted by me or contacted by Mrs. Zola in the athletic office, and we had to verify whether or not that, that symptom was valid. We talked to that parent. We held them out of practice and/or out of school. We cohorted athletes. We completely changed our schedule. We came up with three different drafts of a schedule for boy soccer, girl soccer, cross-country, field hockey, volleyball. cross-country, field hockey, volleyball and girl swim. We limited our spectators. And as I'm sure many of you saw in a few of the emails to the Board of Education and to administration, we limited our spectators to 25% in the auditorium, to less than 20 in our gymnasium and less than 100 on Coteau Field. We reduced a lot of our travelers on our buses, limited the number of managers. One really great thing, I think, that did come out of this past fall with the pandemic is we really improved many of our technology skills. And we were here in the athletic department able to livestream just about every varsity game. And we did that on Facebook Live, we did that on YouTube Live. And many thanks to some of our technology department, which I'll thank them later. So if anything good came out of that, people who weren't able to get a ticket to one of our games or maybe weren't in state or weren't feeling well, could watch their son or daughter or grandchild play. And all of us athletic directors in the Central Connecticut Conference attempted to livestream as many games as possible. We had 381 students participate in our athletic program this fall and very proud that not one of our teams was quarantined. I'd like to think that our coaches did a good of a job as they could have, adhering to all the mitigating strategies, keeping our kids safe on a daily basis. The kids were great, the parents were great, students that weren't feeling well, kept themselves away from the masses. And I do appreciate all of their hard work and effort, you know, with that. So again, hopefully, 20 years back, certainly these kids will remember what fall of 2020 looked like. But we do have a few pictures of our teams that doesn't look that different than maybe years past. And the reason some of you may ask why they don't have their masks on, they were allowed to compete without a mask. So we felt that taking a brief photo without a mask would be appropriate and be safe.
Don't go fast.
Don't go that fast, I'm sorry. Our football team was offered the opportunity, albeit it wasn't Friday Night Lights, it wasn't on Coteau Field, you know, on some of those gorgeous Friday afternoons, Friday evenings. But we did compete in a 7v7 Anna Lyman Challenge. So we did that against Middletown, Newington and Berlin in kind of a home and away series to give them a little taste of football, as long as we were following all of the CDC guidelines and Department of Health, Central Connecticut Department of Health. We were able to continue with senior nights. So again, one of my goals this year and in the last years, we ended 2020, was to not have kids really miss out on some of these milestones. When they look back, hopefully they're going to have fond memories of their high school experience. And again, it's going to be much different than what you or I experienced. But we did have senior night for all of our events, cross-country, again, swim, field hockey, volleyball, boys and girls soccer, cheer, dance and football. Normally, what would be together, they would be kind of tripled up. So what we decided to do with football, with cheer and with dance is holds a Friday night, October 7th, their own special night. So we cleared Coteau Field, we did it at 7 o'clock at night. We brought in the Voice of the Eagles and we honored every senior on that. And if you're on our Facebook page, you probably saw those 30 or 40 photos with the kids, with the parents, with the flowers. It really was a special evening. So and again, we wanted to do that. We also wanted to make sure that our marching band wasn't excluded. Our marching band, just like our athletes, practiced every single week. And they were able in the first week of November to put on three different performances. We had them invited them to halftime of our field hockey and soccer games where they performed. And then on a Wednesday, I think it was November 5th, they were able to have their own showcase. We invited the parents and we also livestreamed that event as well. So the marching band also had an opportunity to showcase their talents. And we wanted to, again, reward them for putting in all that time and effort. Some good news came out of 2020, in addition to just having kids out there on the field and representing Weathersfield. Our football team was given the Connecticut Athletic Association Sportmanship Award in 2020. And as far as work over the last five years with Team Maven. And if any of you remember, just a wonderful person, Maven was a student over at Charles Wright. But she actually loved Weathersfield football and we've been pretty close with her family ever since. So we had a nice little write-up about Maven. It was submitted to the State of Connecticut and our football team was selected as the 2020 Sportmanship winners. And in your packet from Mrs. Murphy, be able to read my submission to that. And again, it started in 2017 as she attempted and unfortunately lost her battle with DIPG. Coach Rob Yakum, one of our soccer coaches, our varsity boy soccer coach, was able to secure his 250th victory at the head of our soccer program. And he actually did that in October by beating his alma mater over at Maloney. So we had another great event that evening. We continued with our Pinktober campaign, where we raised awareness and raised some money for breast cancer. And we raised this year $450 that we were able to donate to Hartford Hospital and their digital mammography program. Field hockey in particular was able to raise $112 on their own. And a lot of the other monies came from our t-shirt sales this year. So that's just a quick overview of our fall season. And again, I try to post as much information on social media that's more timely. And that's the fall. As I had briefly indicated a little bit earlier, tonight, the WHS Winter Sports is really in limbo. Mr. Emmett receives communication as often as I do from the CIAC. And all they've really told us at this point in time is that things were on pause until January 19th. They hope to have some information for us on January 4th. But we don't know what that will look like. We don't know if the season will be shortened. We don't know if sports will be pushed off to an alternate season or even the spring season. We don't know what any of the mitigating strategies, the CIC or the State of Connecticut Health District would like to see us implement. Right now, there's talk of wearing masks for all contests. That would include indoor basketball, in the rank, indoor hockey, gymnastics, indoor track and, you know, and everything. So unfortunately, I have really no information on winter sports at this time. One thing just to know that of all of our sports, wrestling, competitive cheer, competitive dance and football are still classified as high-risk sports. And again, if you've read some of the languages come out from Governor Lamont's office, those certainly cannot take place at all through the rest of this calendar year. And we're again waiting on guidance of what that's going to look like in the next calendar year in 2021. They have outlined a potential, and I use the word potential on purpose, second semester alternative season. We haven't been given any dates, but that is where 11v11 tackle football could take place. Again, a lot more questions than really answers regarding the CIC's alternative season. Spring sports again, we're hoping, since those athletes lost everything last year, we're hoping, and I think the CIC is hoping, to allow for an entire full spring sports season. But again, no information has come out to me, to Principal Moore or to Superintendent Emmett. And again, just to end, and the note, certainly want to end it on a positive and on a high. Last week, or I think a week and a half ago, we had three different athletes sign with colleges. Mia DeStefany with Southern Connecticut to swim, Ciara Judson in girl soccer at Merrimack and Olivia Thompson also in girl swim over to Fairfield. And I'm getting a few other messages and emails regarding some other athletes. And as they choose to continue their play at the next level, I'll certainly be recognizing them and posting stuff on social media. So just getting a special thanks, I've probably been on the phone with Mr. Emmett more than he probably wishes, as things change, as things would change mid-day or even mid-meeting. And just like to thank him, along with my fellow building administration, Andrew Zola in the athletic office, our trainer, Sue Coco and Joanne Campbell, two of our technology teachers, have been instrumental in all the photos and all the live streaming of our games. I had a great set of game workers. And the reason they ask why I had game workers, if the crowd was limited, we had really a presence, a WHS employee at all of our games at all of our levels this year, just to make sure people in the crowd, people that were coming from other towns that might have, you know, been around the field, were adhering to all of our protocols and procedures, namely, wearing a mask and socially distancing. And then we do have a student, a junior, if you've been to any game of late, he is the voice of the Eagles. He volunteered at probably over 100 different contests this year with some play-by-play and with doing the starting lineup. So I'd just like to thank Jimmy as well. So I'm not sure, Mr. Emmett, if the board, you, anybody has any questions regarding high school athletics at this time?
Thank you, Mr. Maltese. Does anyone have any questions or comments for Mr. Maltese? Yes, Ms. Evans.
Hey, Mike, I just wanted to thank you for your presentation and your efforts to try to keep sports alive for these kids. They were so huge for me in high school. And I know so many of the kids really appreciate how quick you guys pivoted with all of the changing information coming out every week. And you gave them as much as you possibly could. The kids are being extremely resilient and understanding, trying to keep things safe. And the fact that there's been, there was no, no one got sick in our sport. You guys did everything right. And I really appreciate all the efforts because I'm sure it wasn't an easy task at all. So.
I will. No, thank you. Like I said, I have a great, great team around me and our kids are wonderful. Our kids are great. They just wanted a chance to get out there on the field. So they really did what we asked them to do.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Maltese, how were the numbers compared to normal fall years? I know you shared with us like 380 student athletes. Is that low, a much lower average?
It's not much lower. I can get you the exact numbers, Mr. Carey, if you'd like. But really, and unfortunately, we had to make some cuts early on in the year just because of the cohorting and the numbers. We were very fortunate, you know, again, unlike most schools, even in our own conference. And we're not one of the largest schools in the world. We were able to put out there a freshman team and I think five or six different sports. So girl soccer, boy soccer, volleyball, field hockey, and it would have been freshman football. We would have had numbers for freshman teams. So I would say it's right on par with any other year in the fall.
Great. No, I don't need exact numbers. I was just wondering. Thank you. That's great to hear, though, that we had that many people participating.
Yeah, I think as the summer wound down, kids just wanted to get, just get out there and be involved in something somewhat normal. So I think that when the chance came out, they gravitated towards it.
Excellent. Thank you. Anyone else?
No, just thank you, Michael. That was a Herculean task that you took. Very nice.
Thank you.
It's good play.
Great job.
Thanks. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Great job.
Keep up the great work with the social media.
I'll keep trying.
Thank you, Mike.
All right, moving on, announcements and information. Board members, please check your packet. Check, see if there's any upcoming meetings. If you can't make it, let the chair of the committee know. Board of Ed meetings held, Students Program Services, 11:17:20, Mr. Healy.
Of course, it's not as prepared as it should be. I could let Sally carry the ball, which I will, other than what we approve right now. And I'm trying to remember the other issues. We were talking about some of the online efforts as well, wasn't that right, Sally?
Yes, we had several updates. We had an update from one of our partners called RSVP Reads. RSVP Reads is a federally funded grant program that connects our senior citizens and seniors actually with, because of remote, not only seniors in Weathersfield, but other seniors around the state to support our elementary and middle school students in development and reading. So Teresa Strong, the program manager, provided an update on all the changes we've made this year to provide these supports virtual. So the exciting part is that we didn't cancel them, but they were, you know, looks very different this year in the virtual environment. We also provided an update on the family learning program that was previously held at Trinity Church, which is facilitated by Kim Bobbin, our family and early childhood coordinator, and Svetlana Smith from Vrabi. And they provided an overview of how their program that provides ESL language services for adults and preschool activities for their children and how they've made that program virtual through the help of a lot of partners and community partners. And so they really highlighted many of the partners that they've been working with. We also had an update from Liz Freitas, John Kazar and Sarah Harris around the SITES Partnership, which is a center on inclusive technology and educational systems. They provided an overview of this grant opportunity. We are one of a handful of districts across the nation involved in this partnership between special services and the instructional technology team to collaborate around a shared vision on providing inclusive practices and universal access for our students, especially as learning needs. And then we also provided a short overview on the update of remote learning. At that time, we had both Silas Steen and Emerson Williams in remote learning and talked a little bit about the transition that was very seamless from our hybrid model to a remote learning model and highlighted some of the planning and structures that allowed that transition to be seamless for students, staff and families. And we've also taken that information from those schools to apply to our remote learning model that will be in place a week after Thanksgiving.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks, Sally.
You're welcome.
Crec Council meeting, 11:18:20, Ms. Granado.
The Crec Council met on November 18th, another virtual meeting. To always remind you, the Crec Council is the Capital Regional Educational Council, which Weathersfield's a member, along with 35 other surrounding towns. This council is responsible for the regional magnet schools, Project Choice. And this year, Crec has also started the school year with organizing and working the Head Start program in Hartford. There was discussion about the ease of the Zoom meetings, especially for Crec, for some of the towns that are on the outer edges of the Crec territory. And it would make council meetings easier to attend instead of traveling into Hartford. This will require constitutional change. And also, we discussed the constitutional change just to have it that the Crec Council with no board of directors, because these two groups appear to be very redundant. We also had a presentation on the progress of the two new schools being built under the Crec guidance. They're stunning. The Academy of Aerospace and Engineering Elementary School in Rocky Hill. And this one is in the process of being built. The Anna Grace Academy of Arts, also an elementary school in Avon. Patrice McCarthy is the legal liaison for Crec and CAE. And she spoke of the possibility of the General Assembly conducting a virtual meeting when the new session begins on January 6th. And CAE and Crec are working on the educational priorities that they will be presenting to the Assembly. And finally, Greg Florio, the Executive Director of Crec, spoke on the disruption of school caused by the COVID pandemic. Crec schools will go virtual the week after Thanksgiving in anticipation of students and staff being exposed to the virus during the holiday. Classes will be online from November 30th to December 4th for all grades and then will resume in person on December 7th. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Granado. Finance and Operations Committee meeting held tonight, 11:24:20. I believe Mr. Michael's had bad internet connection. So we discussed this year's budget, which is currently under budget by just over $500,000, over budget, under budget. So we're doing well there, we're projecting well. And we discussed the timeline for next year's budget. And it's going to be pushed back from what we did last year to probably somewhere in January as a start. Anyone on the committee want to add anything? Excellent. Meeting scheduled, Facilities and Maintenance Committee, 12:07:20 at 6:00 P.M. Unfinished business, there is none. Public comment, Mr. Emmett? Anyone on the phone wishing to make public comment?
Yes, I have one member of the public, 860-985-2717, if you could unmute.
Good evening. If you could state your name and address for the record.
Hi, it's Marjorie Carson and I live at 12 Avalon Place.
Thank you. The floor is yours.
Okay, great. First, I want to thank you all for doing such a great job during these crazy times of COVID. And from the superintendent to principals to staff, they're just working super hard to make. And from the superintendent to principals to staff, they're just working super hard to make this work and keep our kids safe. So I just very, very thankful for you guys. But for now, I just want to communicate my concern that I've had for a while now, but kind of COVID kind of stopped me from communicating this to the board that much. But I wanted to reiterate with you as you begin to make decisions for next school year, I figured I'd bring this topic up. So I'm very concerned with the fact that the freshman class of Weathersfield High School no longer has a full year of social studies. Every district in the area requires and offers their freshman class a full year of social studies. Whether student high school used to up until last year, when the required course, World History, was suddenly removed. Now the freshman class only gets a half year and thus half credit of social studies. So just want to give you a little backstory from what my daughter experiences last year. So when she was in eighth grade, she, like most eighth graders, at the end of eighth grade, they're given a Weathersfield High School catalog to choose their classes. And she had to submit her request at the end of eighth grade, and it included required classes like language arts, math, science, and it included a full year of social studies. So then, fast forward to August, she was emailed her schedule from the high school, and for some reason, it was kind of hard to figure out that she had an extra study hall. We didn't know why. She didn't know that she saw she had her art class she wanted, and she had all these other classes she remembered needing, but she didn't think much of it and couldn't figure it out. So neither myself nor my daughter, and I follow these things, had, we hadn't seen a high school schedule before from the high school, so they're a little bit hard to figure out at first glance. It was not until I got an email days later from a parent that I know who was upset about the social studies class, and she told us all that one of the classes had been cut. Most of us parents at that time had, didn't even realize it. And they hadn't noticed that a semester of social studies was cut, one that was required at the end of eighth grade, two months earlier. It was not until my daughter, I went back to the original high school catalog she got in eighth grade, the end of eighth grade, that we realized it was social studies that was missing, and that's why she had this extra study hall in addition to her other study halls. To be clear, she was days from starting ninth grade, and no one from the high school, not the principal, not the counseling center, not, no one from the administration notified any freshman parents that this required class had been eliminated. Maybe it was an oversight. I don't know why. But then we had to figure out who my daughter's counselor was and email her. Her counselor stated that the class had been eliminated and that my daughter had to make an appointment to come into the high school to meet with her and see if they could find a class available to fill that empty spot. So now here's the context. This is last year, an entire grade of almost 300 students who had just left eighth grade, being told they were getting a full year of social studies, now had to figure out a way to fill that semester with an alternative class, and they all had to come in to talk to their counselor to do so, almost 300 students. So, you know, fast forward now, let me just tell you the facts of kind of how this all played out. And I think a lot of times when you're in the administration, you don't always know, or the board of ed, you don't really know how it affects the communication, how it comes out, and how people don't necessarily know what to do, especially if you're a freshman. So one, there's a few scenarios that happen. Many students and parents didn't realize the class was cut because they didn't realize from the schedule, and they never bothered to try and fill it. And remember, there's no information sent by the school telling parents this information. It was only if you called or emailed that they told you what to do. This resulted in many students having more study halls than they needed and less credit earned for that freshman year. Another scenario was even if a student did make an appointment with their counselor and go in, many students could not get a class to fill that slot because many classes were already full. Remember, no new classes were created to fill the void of almost 300 students needed for a class. So they could only get what was left over, such as a couple seats in one class or a few seats in another. In retrospect, this appears an impossible task, leaving many kids left with just another study hall, as many academic electives are not offered to freshmen or underclassmen. And then many students, like my daughter, were told there was only one class that fit into her time slot. So for my daughter, it was Intro to Computer Programming. She didn't want to take this course, but I forced her because if she needed another, she didn't need another study hall, and it was a half credit she needed to earn, and she would have lost if she didn't take it. But if I had not been persistent in paying attention and getting all this information, my daughter would have slipped through the cracks and taken another study hall. She was 14, and more study halls sound like a good idea, right? But in fact, they're a waste of time, half the time, if you already have another one, and it means less credit earned. And again, think about the context. This is the freshman class of last year, the first class that needed more credits to graduate than prior classes. This higher credit requirement was much discussed at Board of Ed meetings and presentations to parents when their kids were nearing the end of eighth grade. So it boggles my mind, or my brain, why the first thing to happen in their high school experience would be for this school district to eliminate an entire required course for their freshman year. Almost 300 students started out with less credit options than the grade before them, and they needed more credits to graduate. So here we are today. We have another freshman class that just started this year, and they have similar problems. They too get less credit right now, options for their freshman year, because there are less spots to fill that filled a half credit that they would have gotten if the class was still there. So when this happened, I started to ask questions like, huh, what's going on? Why did this happen? We didn't know. No one told us. And one point, I was at a WSBC meeting, and I asked Sally, you know, Mr. Emmett was there, Sally Distoli was there, and her explanation was that they had to cut the course because they needed the teachers to cover additional civics classes for juniors and seniors who needed to graduate. And that was pretty much the explanation as far as I remember it. But it didn't really make sense to me completely because they knew this the year before. Why did they suddenly cut the class after, you know, at August? So then I was at a parent meeting with Mr. Moore, and other parents had asked about this, and he said it was a budget issue, that it was cut because of the budget issue. But still to this day, the publications that come out of the high school about what colleges are looking for and for student credit and what they require and what they need, four years of social studies. Elite colleges are asking for four years of social studies. So, you know, this doesn't, this doesn't make sense. So then I ran into somebody at a social function, and I heard from a social studies teacher at the high school that basically what happened was there was a retirement, social studies of retirement and in the department, and that they were ready or willing or going to hire a new teacher and to address the civics classes issue and to fulfill the freshman class requirements. But that through Sally Distoli or some communication, they were told that they're cutting the class and the position. And so I don't know why I'm hearing different things, but I assume overall it was a budget issue because the spring before, the board of ed had to cut, had to cut over a million, almost a million dollars from its budget. But my issue is, I attended some of those budget workshops, and at not one point was it discussed that they were going to cut academic classes. They were going to cut festival band, they were going to cut Silasian Middle School activities, after school activities, all these things. They were going to cut, they cut an administrative position that Mike Vertigam had. All these things they were going to cut or thinking of cutting, they didn't really need to at the end because they got money from the state, but no point did they discuss cutting social studies or any academic classes. At the same time, they voted, not this board of ed, but the prior one, to add lacrosse, which is an expense. I was kind of surprised they would do that. They decided to add lacrosse at the high school, which I knew would be hard to cut away. So when you're adding a new sport, that's $50,000, $60,000, $80,000 in expense, that's a lot to add when you're already so, you know, struggling with your budgets. So here we are now with, my daughter's class had less academic credits offered to them. And so what I want from you now, and I'd like to see, is as you're looking forward this year to next year, look at the effects of what happened to the current freshman class and last year's freshman class. And see if you can bring back the, the social studies, World History class and bring it back. And I'd like you to answer the following questions, and I'll wrap up. Did the board of ed specifically vote to eliminate the social studies position and this required class? If so, when was that vote? I don't remember that. I believe there's a curriculum committee of the board of ed. Was there a discussion or serious consideration in this committee as to the curriculum, curriculum effects of cutting the social studies class from an entire grade, entire grade that was required? And when deciding to cut World History, did this cut impact students' ability to understand the content of their sophomore class on international studies? Have you asked or can you ask social studies teachers now about this impact? Have they had to change their own sophomore curriculum this year to reflect all the information today sophomores never got last year? Another question, did the board of ed ever ask this high school whether cutting this class would harm students' ability to earn academics credits, especially since they needed more than prior classes? Did or can the board of ed inquire whether cutting this required class for now, which is now we're 500 students that don't have this credit, does it mean too many students have had to take an extra study hall instead of earn credit because there's just no classes available and it's super tight? Did the freshman class of 2008, 19, and 20 have less credit earned on average than the prior freshman class? Did the addition of Lot Lacrosse force the district to make the budget decision to eliminate this required social studies class? And finally, I'd like to say that if in the future, if a budget the town council passes forces the board of ed to cut academic classes at the high school, please tell parents, please tell us. We can't advocate for you or an issue if we ourselves are unaware of the effects of these budget cuts. And ultimately, the town council does not know the effects of the budget cuts. They need to know as well. And what's most frustrating is that the cut came out of nowhere and no parents were told. And now our children, who are expected to get more credits than prior classes, have less ability to do so. So I urge you to revisit this issue. I know you have a lot on your plate, but if it's something we can add back, because every other district in the city area, the county area, has a full year of social studies for their freshmen, I think we can do it too. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Marjorie.
Anyone else on the phone, Mr. Emmett?
No, Mr. Carey, nobody else.
All right, moving on to board comment. Any board members wishing to make comment? Elaine?
Mike, I would like to have the answers sent to all of us on Marjorie's questions because I can't answer them from our budget meetings either. Number two, I'm looking at today's news and several, well, many teachers from the CEA and the AFT are marching with signs because they don't feel safe. Have any of our teachers expressed that they don't feel safe in their buildings? That's just a town issue. That's certainly what they're marching for in those other counties. Maybe their buildings, like we've discussed, don't have the social distancing possibilities and stuff. But I just want to know if you're hearing anything through the grapevine if our teachers aren't feeling safe.
Yes, I hear, I hear. Let me speak to that piece. With regard to answers to the questions, I think what we're going to need to do is go back through and take a look at this video and ascertain all of those questions.
Yes, oh, absolutely. Yeah, I get it. No, no rush, but I'm interested in the answers.
Yeah, but I certainly want to speak to the issue about teachers feeling fearful and anxious, and the answer there is yes. It's a reality. And, you know, again, as we go through the process of contact tracing, and we have to notify staff members that they need to be quarantined, it certainly raises a level of concern. With regard to the fact that we're in hybrid, we're in hybrid for a reason. We're looking to make sure that we decrease person density. That's what the hybrid model does. So we're able to maintain that six-foot social distance. We're able to, obviously, from a perspective of having ample PPE, we have it, having ample supplies, frequent hand washing, all of those mitigation strategies are clearly in place. But the reality is this, this virus is unpredictable. And, you know, I mentioned earlier in the conversation about, you know, where it's spreading from. And we found a lot of spread from social interactions, Halloween parties. We found a lot of interaction in youth sports. You know, let me give you an example, Elaine. We have a notification that we have a student that is tested positive. We receive for contact tracing purposes a list of teammates. And those, those towns span 20 different towns across two different states. And every single one of those students on that team is considered close contact and then has to quarantine. So that's where we've seen it's been community spread. And, you know, again, I don't dictate what teachers do on their own time on the weekend. In some cases, they are out socializing. They may not be utilizing their own mitigation strategies, and people get sick. And as Charles Brown said from the CCHD, the community spread right now is so widespread, it's becoming increasingly difficult to truly figure out where you got it.
Sure.
So the mitigation strategies are going to continue to be extraordinarily important moving forward. But thank you for the questions, Elaine.
Well, I need one, I have one other, two other things I want to address, Chuck, okay?
Yeah, go ahead. Floor is yours.
Okay. Mike, I was reading, I looked up FMLA for COVID on the internet, and it seems to, if I read it correctly, which I could probably have misunderstood, is that FMLA, for people who have to stay home for COVID, is determined by where you work. Does that sound like, do we offer FMLA COVID to our teachers who say, well, I have to stay home 14 days now? How are we dealing with the teachers who have the COVID disease, not the cold or the flu or?
No, but yeah, we have a code for that, Elaine. And in some cases, what we've done is when we've had to quarantine cohorts, we had the teacher continue to work remotely with her students, and everybody's working remotely. I've had other cases where I've had teachers take FMLA COVID leave with regard to caring for an ill relative or dealing with the childcare issue. So that's another one of those.
Individual cases.
Yeah, we have to take.
Okay. I just wondered if we even use it, you know, and, and do we pay this teacher who has to be, let's say, home with a child who's got COVID? Do they get their pay, Mike, or do they get it taken away from their sick time?
There, there is a formula that the law spells out.
Okay.
A certain percentage.
That's enough. Okay. I just, because I was reading it, and I said, you've got to clarify for me. And Mike, I would appreciate it if you could include in Friday updates notes from the social justice meeting you go to.
Yeah, Elaine, what we do is we post those meetings, we record those, and information sessions, so they're available. In the event that you can't be there, we post those to the website. So you can go back through.
I'll find them there. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Evans?
I'll be quick. So I wanted to, this kind of piggybacks a little bit off of Elaine in talking about the teachers. I kind of commend the district's decision to take the week after Thanksgiving off. I just came out of quarantine because I've done nothing in seven, eight months, but we got, we came in contact with someone, and it's really stressful with an infant and a pre-existing condition in my house, just having 14 days at home with, you know, regular allergies and stuff. It was really stressful, and it just kind of, when I'm talking to some of the kids' teachers with full families at home themselves, I kind of see the anxiety there too. So quarantine after quarantine, I can see that adding up and having that. I really commend the decision. I know it wasn't an easy one, and all districts are doing different, but I've heard a lot of positive feedback from that as well from some other parents at my kid's school and stuff. So I, you know, appreciate what our district is doing. It is hard. I went back to work. I have an infant. I have kids home. It's really hard, but I feel like I feel safe with our classrooms. I feel like we're trying to keep our teachers safe. So I really appreciate, and I've gotten a lot of really good feedback on, just to add the light, of what our district is doing, and it is hard, and you see the kids kind of struggling sometimes, but you also see them being super resilient and truly moving forward, and the teachers are doing an amazing job. So I appreciate even giving our teachers just a breath to stay home and kind of work remotely and let them just take a deep breath too and kind of reset to kind of go. Because it's everywhere. Every, I probably know eight people in my family and everything else that have come down with it, and it's scary how different it affects everybody. So, you know, seeing it so close to home, it makes me appreciate this a little bit more, and I just wanted to share that with you. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Evans. Anyone else? Mr. Diego.
I just wanted to extend my thanks again to Mr. Maltese. As a senior, I really didn't have any expectations of what a fall season would look like. And then just having this fall season, it was just amazing. And then to piggyback off of what Ms. Evans said, we're, the high schoolers are happy that we have this week, full remote week off after Thanksgiving. A lot of the field has a fantastic idea, and I agree. A lot of families are getting together. I think it's a good idea to have a remote, remote week.
Thank you. Ms. Granato.
Not to end on a downer here, but I did go to the Hunger Action Team meeting, right? It was a virtual meeting. And it really is, it's a little frightening to hear what's going on. Top request from residents in Weathersfield was rental payments and energy assistance. This is that Alice group, too, people being This is that Alice Group, too, people being financially affected due to COVID, and they are living paycheck to paycheck. Senior residents who are on fixed income have been less affected, but people in their mid-sixties who are working are very affected. The Weathersfield High School, and Michael, this was Mike Maltese. I guess the football team did tackle hunger food drive, which was very grateful and very generous of our Weathersfield students. DECA is currently hosting a school-wide food drive to benefit the Weathersfield Food Bank. And Emerson Williams is also hosting a school-wide drive. The Dazzling Dozen is asking for support from local businesses and organizations to collect money and food each month for the Weathersfield Food Bank. Weathersfield Public Schools are offering free breakfast and lunch to all Weathersfield children age eighteen and under. They're to pick the food up Monday through Friday, ten thirty to twelve at Weathersfield High School. And I would like to take this time to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. I never thought of using the word grit when giving wishes on this holiday, but in this holiday, we must all show grace and grit. This year has been most challenging. Everybody can't wait for two thousand twenty to leave. But we are also thankful for many things, and it truly is a time for courage and perseverance. So thank you and happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you, Ms. Granado. Mr. Lesser?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to pick up where Bobby left off, and first urge the community and the folks listening out there to please practice all the safety measures during Thanksgiving. We want to try and avoid a spread in the community as much as possible, so please be diligent. Want to wish everybody a happy and safe Thanksgiving, and also say that to all the pictures on my Hollywood Square screen tonight, it is great to work with you. I'm grateful to be a part of this group, all of you administrators and board members who work so hard. It's a pleasure for me. I'm grateful to be able to work with you on this endeavor, and wish you all a safe and happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lesser. Anyone else?
Just one more thing, Chuck.
Yeah, of course.
Michael, I have to say, when I saw your remote learning for November thirtieth till December fourth, I think I was grateful. And I support it, because I had the experience of coming back from Texas at a one A M. flight. Nothing is open at the airport to get your test. So I had to stay home, as Kelly was saying, till I could find a date to get tested, which was not until three days after I was home, so that I could have scheduled a test. So I think you've done the right thing for our teachers and for people traveling. Just wanted to show my support, Michael.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, thank you, everyone. Happy Thanksgiving. Everyone stay safe. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed. Abstention, motion passes. Thank you, everyone.
Be safe, everyone. Enjoy.